Looks like we're live. Okay, Fabiano, once we hear you tell us it's good, then Sam can get started.
All right, we got a thumbs up. So, welcome everybody to the Somerville City Council at-large Candidates Forum on Housing. My name is Sam and I'm a community organizer at CAS, the Community Action Agency of Somerville. We are so proud to host this third and final event as a series of candidates forums in partnership with the Somerville Renters Committee. Before we begin, I'd like to review some event logistics. The agenda for tonight's forum will include welcome and ground rules from the Renters Committee, opening statements from the candidates, five open-ended housing questions, a lightning round of yes or no questions, and then our closing just after 9:00 PM. For this forum, our questions are already prepared for the candidates. However, if you have more questions at the end of the event, we encourage you to contact the candidates directly. This event is being recorded and the Zoom room is closed to the public. However, we are currently live streaming to the CAS Facebook page. Later this week, we will send links to this recording and to the candidates questionnaire responses via email to everyone who registered for our mayoral candidates forum that was on Sunday, August 8. And finally, for tonight's forum, we have simultaneous interpretation on Zoom from English into Spanish for our members on the Renters Committee who speak Spanish. We are so grateful for the time and expertise of our interpreter Mario, who is ensuring language access for this event. The Zoom language channels have already been turned on and we ask that candidates please speak slowly and clearly for our interpreter. Again, thank you so much all for being here and now I'd like to pass it to Akita from the Somerville Renters Committee.
Thank you, Sam. Good evening to the candidates, neighbors of Somerville and outside the city and members of CAS, the Community Action Agency of Somerville. My name is Akita and I'm a resident of Ward 1 and a member of the Somerville Renters Committee. The Somerville Renters Committee was formed in response to COVID-19 pandemic, but we have been experiencing the affordable housing crisis firsthand for much longer. As an organized group of working class and low-income renters from many different backgrounds, the Somerville Renters Committee is building a movement of families and neighbors to make Somerville a better city for all. Tonight for a forum, we really appreciate the at-large city council candidates for taking time to speak to residents of Somerville. This is a nonpartisan and nonendorsement event. We look forward to hearing the answers to committees' questions on housing and how we can make sure that working class and low-income residents can remain in the city we call home. As a reminder of our forum ground rules, we ask that again, that you please speak slowly and clearly for the interpreters. Please keep the forum professional, no attacks between candidates, no interruptions, and no offensive language will be tolerated. Please stick to the time given for your answer during each part of your forum. And please stick to the topic of the question. Matt and Nicole will be assisting with time and rule keeping. Again, thank you everyone for being here tonight. I'll now pass it to Denise.
Thank you, Akita. Hello, everyone. My name is Denise. I'm a member of the Somerville Renters Committee and for the past 14 years, I've been calling Somerville home. As a Latina single mother, I've endured discrimination, harassment by my landlord over my marital and financial status. Over the years, I've seen many landlords abusing their power and taking advantage of families and individuals who do not speak English by sending eviction notice without informing their rights. Somerville preaches for its diversity and inclusion when in reality, it's far from the truth. Electoral officials say they want to help, but their hands are tied. We need a drastic reform in the city my children and I call home. We need changes for family like mine. That being said, I'd like to thank all seven out of eight at-large candidates who were present here today. We are now begin opening statements. Candidates have two minutes each to share their opening statements on who they are and their vision for housing in Somerville. We will begin in alphabetical order by candidate's last names and rotate their order throughout the forum. Nicole will be calling the candidates' names.
Hey, and Sam, is the timer ready?
Yes.
Great. First, we'll have Willie Burnley Jr.
Hello, everybody. First off, I'd like to thank CAS, the Somerville Renters Committee, and especially Mario for providing interpretation for this event. As Nicole said, my name is Willie Burnley Jr. I'm a candidate for Somerville City Council. I'm also a former union steward, a community organizer, and a renter who lives on Winter Hill. I decided to run for Somerville City Council at large because I believe that there's far more than we can do to make the city affordable, make the city accessible for everyone who wants to get around and use public space and make the city accountable to its residents. As Denise said, we need a radical transformation of our community and it's in to live up to the values that so many residents have. And that is exactly why I got into this race. The issue of housing justice is very personal to me. Several years ago, as a Somerville resident, I was displaced when my landlord raised my rent hundreds of dollars and I didn't have any recourse to stay in this city. The city at the time was not as interested in putting resources toward keeping residents in their homes. I know the anxiety and the fear that so many residents are feeling right now as they fight to stay in this community. That's why since I got back, I've gotten involved organizing for housing justice with Somerville Community Land Trust, with Union United, and I helped organize a rally with CAS in January for to extend the eviction oratorium. I believe there's so much more we can do to create permanently affordable and accessible housing in our community and I'm so happy to be here with you all to talk about that. And if anyone at home is interested in anything I talked about or want to get involved in this movement, feel free to follow me online at Willie for Somerville on Instagram and Facebook and go to my website, WillieforSomerville.com. Thank you.
Okay, second, we will have Virginia Hussey.
Hello. How you doing? My name is Virginia Hussey and I'm running for Somerville City Council at large. I want to first start by saying thank you for having us all. I'm born and raised in Somerville. I'm third generation. I'm a single mom of a 10-year-old boy who also goes to the Healy School. I was raised in East Somerville. My parents bought a house here back 35 years ago. They both worked for the city and union members and worked hard to afford it back then. I also went to the military, was in the 82nd Airborne, and I did two tours for Iraq. And when I came home, I ended up being homeless, going couch to couch with a newborn son, where I was finally part of the VASH program, which is a Section 8 and bulk rehab program for veterans. And it took me about three years to even try to find and get on that list and get a voucher. And you know, as my whole support system was here in Somerville, I was incapable of finding an apartment in Somerville, so I had to move to Stonem. And again, same thing, I would go to places and as soon as they found out that, you know, I had a voucher, I would get turned away or, you know, a single mom with, you know, no income at that time because I wasn't working. I was trying to go back to school and kind of get my life together as I was, you know, just coming home from everything I was going through. So finally moved back to Somerville. So I've gone through this system. I've been with Somerville Saints together, fighting for, you know, our citizens. And I've gone through it and I think that there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And that's why I'm here. That's why I'm ready to step up, be your next city councilor, your voice. And if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me. My email is virginiahussey@large.org and please, any questions? Thank you.
Okay, third, we will have Charlotte Kelly.
Hi folks, I'm Charlotte. I use she/her pronouns. Thanks to the CAS organizers, the Renters Committee, and the interpreters for being here tonight. I'm a queer, fourth-generation resident. I'm a renter and have been a community organizer for the past 10 years now, mainly working on public education justice issues. First, when I was a baby, little 18-year-old at UMass Bammers, I had to take out student loans in order to afford a public college. And then my classmates agitated me and said, Charlotte, you know, we can organize around this. We can fight for better public funding for our public institutions. And so I started organizing and I haven't stopped. And most recently, I was the executive director of a statewide community labor coalition that fought and won a $1.5 billion increase in public school funding, particularly going to communities like Somerville that educate high percentages of low-income students, students of color and immigrant students. So when the out-large seat started to open up, folks that I'd been doing community organizing with for nearly a decade came to me and said, Charlotte, we want you to run. So for me, as a renter, I know what it's like to wake up every day and feel that sense of anxiety and that fear that you don't know what your landlord is going to do next with your building. You don't know if your rent is going to go up the next time you sign a lease or if even asking for something to get fixed is going to cause a bigger problem than you want to. And for me, I think about my parents when they were trying to find stable, permanent housing in the 80s and they couldn't afford Somerville. And now myself and my partner want to build our lives here, but as renters, it becomes more and more unaffordable and inaccessible by the day. So fighting for a city that provides safe, healthy, and fair housing for everybody, making sure that we're actually putting our resources and our time and our money where our mouth is and making sure folks can stay in our community and really building a vision of Somerville where housing is right, right down to the ways we legislate, the ways we fund housing, and the ways that we make sure we fight tooth and nail to keep people in their homes. So thanks again for having us here tonight.
Okay, fourth, we have Justin Kukota.
Hi, I'm Justin Kukota, your friend and neighbor in Somerville. For 20 years, I've been part of our community as a renter, homeowner, vaccine researcher, climate advocate, and your Democratic State Committee man. It would be an honor to serve you as Somerville's next city councilor at large. Somerville is facing unprecedented challenges in pandemic that threaten our public health and economy, compounded by the long-term challenges of the climate crisis. We need to vaccinate our community, reopen our economy safely following the science, reduce our carbon footprint, and increase our business tax base to fund our schools, city services, and housing affordable to all. I grew up in a blue-collar community next to an affordable housing development and moved to Massachusetts seeking education and economic opportunity. As a grandson of a farmer and a union steelworker and son of parents who were the first in their families to go to college, I understand the importance of affordable housing, education, and lifelong job opportunities. Since completing my doctorate at Harvard, I have committed myself to medical research into treatments for breast cancer and life-saving vaccines. Over the past 20 years, I've been proud to be part of our community in Somerville and I am proud of what helped transform our politics to be more progressive. I reached out to nearly 20,000 people in our district by mail, social media, phone, and door-knocking in support of the Green New Deal for Massachusetts. And together with activists across Commonwealth, we lobbied successfully for the historic climate law passed this year. With the Green New Deal that is now law, we must also prepare our students for the green economy of the future. Every member of our community deserves access to free, quality, lifelong public education and equal employment and housing opportunity. Together, we can tackle the historic challenges ahead of us and create a healthier, greener economy of the future. Thank you for listening and I ask for your vote November 2 and invite you to join us at electjustin.org. Lastly, I send my regards to Tracy Pratt. I wish her a speedy recovery and I look forward to seeing her again on the campaign trail. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Justin, for that acknowledgement. For audience members who are tuning in on Facebook or maybe watching this recording, just want to note that at-large candidate Tracy Pratt was unable to be with us this evening due to a medical issue. She does send her regrets and her questionnaire will be posted online with the other candidates following the event. So to continue our opening statements, Eve Seichik will be next.
Hello there. My name is Eve Seichik. I use they/them pronouns. I'm a community organizer with the Democratic Socialists of America in Boston and a longtime social, Somerville resident and socialist. So yeah, I am just really honored to be here with CAS today. Like, housing and renters' issues are such a near and dear issue to me. I mean, the fact is, we've been in this housing crisis for decades, right? Although, we seem to only have a way of calling it a housing crisis when it gets so bad that it affects middle-income people. And we know that there's always been a housing crisis for working people and low-income people. And at the root of it is, I think, a desire and the human right to be treated like a human being in matters of housing, which hasn't been delivered on by our society. When your landlord doubles your rent or evicts you because you complain about the mold, you don't feel like you're being treated like a human being, and that has to change. We have to build an inclusive movement for housing justice and a fighting movement where no one is disposable and no one gets left behind. And I think we need to really think about what it would take to reverse the course of this decades-long crisis and really dig into policy specifics. At the end of the day, to me, the city has to directly build new, green, affordable housing and buy housing and make it permanently affordable, not just help developers build luxury condos with small amounts of affordable units. When, you know, we have to ask ourselves why it is that elected officials say their hands are tied when we approach them about housing issues in the past and why our housing situation hasn't fundamentally changed. At the end of the day, I believe that's because we're going up against the powerful forces of real estate money and we're going to have to fight hard and fight together to reverse the course of the housing crisis with bold proposals and an all-hands-on-deck approach, which I'm excited to build with great organizations like CAS. So thank you.
Okay, next we have Kristin Strezzo.
Hello, I am Councilor Kristin Strezzo. So a little bit about me, and I do want to say that there's, I've worked with many of you and CAS and housing advocates and delighted to see what we're going to do together in the future. And there's a lot of good, good work going on. So a little bit about me, I'm a single mom of two kids in the Somerville school system and I also spent 12 years caring for my elderly grandmother. I believe that we need voices on city council that understand the unique needs of our city. Far too many residents are getting priced out of our community and the pandemics only made it worse. We've all seen that firsthand. I ran for office because I knew Somerville needed decision-makers who didn't just call for affordable housing, but who understood affordable housing because I live in affordable housing. So I know firsthand the challenges and how difficult it is to navigate the complex web of resources and programs. And I understand personally the difficult decisions many Somerville families make to stay in their community. As your city councilor, I work to ensure that every resident feels the dignity of safe, equitable housing. I'm the Chair of the Housing and Community Development Committee and I've kept affordable housing on the agenda every single month. I'm a member of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and I'm also working with policymakers throughout the state to continue on the dialogue of affordable housing throughout the Commonwealth. In my case, it took years for my family to find an apartment that was both affordable and accessible when that could accommodate my grandmother who had a walker and needed ADA accessibility. I'm grateful for it every day. And I've said since the very beginning that this is about action, not words. I'm very excited to continue on the dialogue together and I'm asking for your vote November 2.
Okay, and our final candidate this evening is Jake Wilson.
Hi, I'm Jake Wilson. I use he/him pronouns. I've been a homeowner in Winter Hill since 2004 and prior to that, I was a renter in Philadelphia and Boston for the previous eight years. Thanks to the Somerville Renters Committee and CAS for putting together this event tonight. In a city with such a large population of renters, these are hugely important issues. Renters are really feeling the effects of our housing affordability crisis, particularly acutely. And as Kristin mentioned, the pandemics only made things worse. My family's seen friends, neighbors, coworkers, classmates forced to move away because of rising rents. So for, for me, the issue of housing affordability and instability is a personal one. First of all, I support the return of rent control and I'd like to see a simple, straightforward annual percentage limit on the amount a landlord can raise rent on returning tenants, absent of significant capital improvements. Until that happens, that doesn't mean our hands are tied. I believe in incentivizing behavior where we can and regulating it where it needs to be regulated. And I think it's in both landlords' and tenants' best interests to have a symbiotic relationship and we need to help make that happen. We need to level the playing field. Landlords have a huge advantage. They're often familiar with the area and its laws and they know what they can get away with. Whereas many renters are new to the area, it might not be as familiar with the laws and the responsibilities of landlords. And in many cases, there's a language barrier there. So we need to be looking to close that gap and make sure tenants know their rights and that they have the support they need in the event of a conflict with a landlord. I'm excited to be here. I'm grateful for the opportunity to take part in this and I also want to send along my wishes for a speedy recovery to Tracy. Thanks.
Thank you, candidates. I will now pass to Marla to begin our housing questions.
Hello, everybody. My name is Marla and I am a ward four resident and a member of the Somerville Renters Committee. I've, I was asked to share a couple of minutes about my own personal experience and I'm originally from Honduras. I came here when I was 16 and I've been in the Boston area for 35 years. Five different places have been my homes until I finally landed in Somerville. And the last place I was, unfortunately, as I suffer from gentrification, which is they bought the building where I was living and 47 units that we had in the building, we were asked to pay the rent they were asking or leave. So the majority of us, we had to leave. I think only a couple of them stayed. So like 43 of us left the building. And so I've also, like, in the past also had, I wasn't homeless because I didn't fit the criteria because I had a place where I could sleep with my daughter in somebody's living room. And, but that's, that's actually, to me, I am homeless, but according to them, I wasn't. But then I landed this apartment where I'm, where I'm living right now. And of all places, I never thought I'd be coming to Somerville because I know I used to be an intern in CAS and I knew how tough it is to have, to live in a low-income place here and and, but I was lucky because I, I know that, I know this couple from my church and they offered me this place. And I moved here and it's going to be two, almost two years since I've been here. And so I just wanted to share a little bit of my story so, so that you could know why I am, I am a member of the Renters Committee and why I'm so eager to see some changes in the community. And I'm actually also grateful because places like Somerville, CAS, and other organizations in Somerville, they really try to inform renters. They really try to make us see that we're valuable, that we have lost for renters. And, and then I feel empowered, to be honest with you. And so I'm going to ask some of the questions. I'm actually the first question and it's going to be for each candidate, but it's going to take two minutes and 50 seconds and they're going to time it on the, on the watch. And the first question is, far too many residents are still struggling to pay rent due to income loss during the pandemic, especially those who work in the service sector, gig economy, and undocumented immigrants who might not qualify for traditional types of rental assistance. How would you support the recovery of residents in these situations so that they remain stably housed?
Thank you so much, Marla. So, Sam, the timer is ready. Virginia will be our first candidate to answer this question.
Hello. So to answer your question, I think that we need to work with landlords and help them when their tenants aren't able to pay their rent or are having issues. We need to make sure that our nonprofit partners that we rely on have the resources that they need and have that support our city because without them, we wouldn't be able to do anything. We wouldn't have any of this. So I think our nonprofits are also affected by the high costs. So if we lose them, we'll lose everything. So I think that we need to start working with landlords and bridge that together so that, you know, they're not scared to take low income and get rid of that stigma. That's the big problem. And again, I faced that when I had my voucher. It was, you know, they label you, they look down on you. You know, and we need to get rid of that. We need to all work together as a community. We are a community. And we have to do that because if not, we're going to lose our families, which again, I know a couple of my candidates, fellow candidates said it. I've lost a lot of friends and families that have had to move out, that have been pushed out, can't afford it, couldn't afford it. You know, we were grateful that my parents bought in East Somerville when nobody wanted to live here so long ago. However, they worked very hard for it and then for me to come home and, you know, be homeless. You know, it, it was a big eye awakening of what Somerville needed for changes. So I think that just coming together as a community and, you know, making the developers do more units, give back and, and everybody working together. It doesn't have to be one or the other. And I just feel like it's very, excuse me, very divided. I also think that, you know, maybe saying rent control, people think that we're trying to control them. So maybe say rent regulation or, you know, something to that effect and work together for, for everybody. Nobody should feel, you know, scared to say they, they want something fixed because they're going to get evicted or their rent raised. So I think that there's, there's a lot that we can do. Thank you.
Okay, next up, we will have Charlotte.
Thanks for this question. I really appreciate it. I think getting resources into the hands of folks is the most important and most urgent thing that we have to do. I talked to many renters. I talked to folks who work in the housing justice world and they say to me, the people that I'm working with, myself as a renter, I am just struggling to put food on my table, never mind fill out paperwork in order to get rent stabilization or any sort of resources to keep me in my home. So expanding basic universal services like food access and free, freeing the tea so that people who are just trying to survive in their day-to-day lives can have their basic needs met. From there, once we've addressed some of those really fundamental issues that people are dealing with, trying to eliminate some of the bureaucratic loopholes that folks have in order to accessing funds and accessing support. State and local dollars often can be used to give undocumented folks, to give gig economy workers, to give folks who may not fall under those federal qualifications. State and federal and local dollars can be used for those folks. So making sure that we are using our budget strategically and that our city's dollars are actually representative of our values as a community. So expanding resources like the Emergency Housing Fund and the CARES Fund. I think there's a big question about where this money comes from when we're talking about putting more resources into people's hands. But we know there are dollars coming down from the federal government in the form of the American Relief Plan Act or the Green Line Extension Refund from the state. So how can we be using those dollars to do anti-displacement work? Whether that's helping renters, helping folks who are experiencing housing stability with deposit security, right? How can we get dollars into folks' hands so that they can put down a first blast and a security deposit, which often is a huge hurdle and barrier to preventing someone from staying in their home? And similarly, expanding the Office of Housing Stability so they have enough staff who speak multiple languages, who are able to manage a caseload so that if folks need resources, if folks need money from the city, they actually have the capacity at OHS to do that and provide services to folks.
Okay, thank you. Just a quick reminder to candidates to speak a bit more slowly for our interpreter. And next up, we'll have Justin.
Thank you. So firstly, I
Thank you. So firstly, I, I support the moratorium on evictions during the pandemic. And we should follow the advice of our public health experts to make sure that evictions are paused as long as necessary for us to not only recover from the public health threat presented by the coronavirus, but also the economic disruption that it causes. We don't want a situation where people are displaced from their homes in the middle of a pandemic and an economic downturn. And that snowballs to cause wider, widespread, not only infections, but also economic disruption. It's important for us to understand that we're all dependent on each other in the economy. And we don't want a situation where uh, evictions cause a domino effect that causes an even deeper depression. In addition to immigration status, I support complete policy neutrality as pertains to immigration status in our city. Everyone should have access to all of our city services and benefits and be able to fully participate in every aspect of our city, with the exception of voting, which is regulated by the federal government. If they establish residency in our city, we should have definitions of residency that apply to both US citizens as well as people who have different immigration status, but nonetheless live here for an extended period of time, also have uh, you know, follow the law or, or, you know, contributing to our society, they should be treated as equal. So I support complete neutrality as pertains to immigration. And I also want to point out that we have services available right now to support people in this situation. So the Somerville has an Office of Housing Stabilization. If you are in need of housing support, please search for them online. Uh, they provide both rental support as well as mortgage support. No one needs to lose their housing in the middle of the pandemic because they can't, because of an, you know, economic need. So please reach out to Somerville Office of Housing Stabilization. They can provide support right now. We also have food pantry citywide as well as food assistance programs uh, available again to the city website. So it's really important for us to make people aware that these programs exist. And certainly I support caps on excessive rent increases if the state legislature gives us the authority. And as well as construction and affordable housing throughout the city and subsidies for lower-income renters as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next up, we will have Eve.
I thank you. Um, yeah, no, I really like this question. Uh, I have to say the, this eviction moratorium is so key. I mean, just, I think everybody in our society, like all of our neighbors, who aren't, you know, maybe big-money real estate developers or corporate landlords, know just how immoral and painful and heartless it is to evict someone during a pandemic. Um, and frankly, to use the rent debt accrued during the pandemic as a basis for eviction later. So there's a bill in the state legislature to cancel back rent debt from this period because people were in an unprecedented and awful situation that they had no control over. Working people were forced with deadly choices to keep their family safe um, or to go into work at uh, dangerous jobs in order to make rent and make a living. So I would say it's crucial to keep the eviction protections we have at the city level in place um, until we can find, make sure that every family, regardless certainly of documentation status, is going, isn't going to be suddenly faced with eviction on the basis of that back rent um, when those protections are lifted. And if despite everything that I and other like-minded folks in the housing justice movement do, those protections do um, disappear, I will be on the ground uh, to fight back against evictions. Because that's, I think, what organizers do. And I just have to say, you know, this, uh, this isn't such an abstract issue. Clarendon tenants got, were threatened with inspections and eviction during the pandemic by the city's own housing authority. Right? So this is, uh, it's really like a very material and real issue. And we need to make sure that um, as I'll echo what uh, Charlotte Kelly said, it's, we just have to give people the food assistance, which in its current form is not adequate. We should do a program like Chelsea Eats where we give people more food security, rent assistance, and ongoing long-term support. With the cash needs to move uh, into new places. Um, yeah, while we work at the state level to eliminate some of those things like excessive broker fees that people face.
Okay, and next up, we have Kristen.
Okay, first, I'm really glad that we're talking about this because this is a really um, serious issue. And it's been, I've been working very hard uh, on issues uh, on this since being a city councilor, well, before that, but as city councilwork, it's been a cornerstone in my work as well. Number one, we have to be talking about uh, supporting the Office of Housing Stability as much as possible, making sure they're getting the resources that, uh, that it can to thrive. That uh, and, and also, one of the most pressing needs is, is with translations. Making sure, and I fought in the, in the budget to make sure that um, Office of Housing Stability is getting that. Also, because translating documents and interpretations as well, but getting interpreters is hard, well, uh, hard to find as, as well sometimes. And uh, supporting housing advocacy groups is really important. But also, um, making sure, and uh, I was one of uh, quite a few people that were calling on landlords during the eviction moratorium. And well, and, and while we were really getting afraid that, um, people were still going to be evicted. And as we were amping up towards the um, the, the eviction moratorium ending, that landlords, um, we were, I was one of, of, uh, calling landlords, uh, our largest landlords in the city, making sure that they were not going to evict tenants. Including one tenant that was threatened with eviction over a bill of two hundred and fifty dollars. And I do want to clarify that the housing, the, the, the housing authorities here are, are state and federal. So we need to uh, mention that. It's uh, the uh, uh, and also make sure that uh, the, the work continues that, that, that our tenants are empowered and that tenant organization groups are happening. And that has to do with a lot of community organizing. And there's a lot of good work happening. Luckily, we're in Somerville. And there's a lot of people that care very passionately for this. We're working very hard on the frontlines and I'm gonna continue on the work. And I'm grateful for the conversation. This needs to continue on. Thank you.
Thank you. And next up, we have Jake.
Maria, thanks for sharing your story. I'm sorry you were displaced like that. We all need to be working to help prevent others from going through that. In a reasonable society, this pandemic would have seen workers lost income replaced so that no one fell behind on rent or mortgage payments. Sadly, our society failed to do this. So the eviction moratorium became a necessary Band-Aid. It's been crucial to prevent displacement during a pandemic and I was glad to see it extended. But at some point, it's gonna end. And I'm pretty terrified about what's gonna happen at that point. Until that point, we need to make sure we're helping every single person qualified for pandemic rental assistance jump through those hoops. This is time-critical. And the city should be devoting major, major funding and personnel to this through the Housing, Office of Housing Stability. For those who ultimately won't qualify for rental assistance, we need to be working with tenants and landlords together to help prevent displacement. I support uh, public-funded legal counsel for tenants facing eviction. And where eviction sadly does eventually happen, we need to be working with displaced folks to get them back into housing they can afford. As others have mentioned, there are major hurdles to getting into new, uh, new rental unit. And we need to be doing what we can to eliminate those hurdles.
Okay, thank you. And our last candidate for this question will be Willie.
Yes, thank you for this question. Um, I am gonna echo unfortunately a lot of what uh, my fellow candidates are, were saying. But I'm gonna take it a step further. We, Somerville has been leaning on some of these issues, particularly in terms of the eviction moratorium. But we are not doing good enough. When I joined with CAS in uh, renters uh, in January, renters who were part of La Court Realty, who've been doing a lot of amazing tenant organizing and tenant unionization here in Somerville. One of the demands that we put forward was extending the eviction moratorium for up for it to a year after the pandemic. So not just saying, well, as long as there's a pandemic, we're going to make sure no one's kicked out. Because we know that people have accrued so much debt um, from rent, from utilities, that as soon as this eviction moratorium goes up, if we have not um, dealt with that backlog, people are gonna be out on the street. We need to do far more. So, starting with that, um, I think we can provide a level of stability for folks who are behind right now. But we can also do more. We need to be, as I said, putting, using these federal funds that are coming to our state, to our city, um, to put more money into rental assistance, food assistance. We need to be um, pushing, working with groups like the Worker Center, the Welcome Project, the Office of Housing Stability, to make sure that as we are targeting these funds, the folks who need them the most are being included. Not just having a neutral policy, but making sure that those folks who the system too often overlooks are involved in this process and are taken care of. And I think we also, as I'm so glad that CAS does these know-your-rights canvases because there are rights that so many people don't know about, including the fact that when you apply for rental assistance, um, you cannot be evicted. If you are in that process, please apply right now. Because that will at least give you a modicum of support and stability as you fight back. Thank you.
Hi, um, I'm gonna ask a question too, but first I'm gonna introduce myself. I am Magdalena Gomez and I am a community organizer in CAS. But I have been involved with the community since I started working as a tenant organizer in Somerville Community Corporation. I started there two weeks before the World Health Organization announced that we were facing a pandemic. And my job completely changed. Uh, I had to somehow do a social work job because there were waves of people asking for help to pay for the rent. And most of the cases I worked with were Latinx folks who were hardly affected by the landlords they had. Usually they didn't have a lease, they didn't know their rights, and landlords played with their tenant's immigration status to threaten with eviction or changing the rules of the game. And the pandemic is not over, so sadly, we continue to see cases like this. And that's part of the job that we as organizers have to do. Build power so no one has to go through uh, their rights violation. And with that being said, question number two is, the housing in Somerville that is available for, for low-income residents, including publicly-owned inclusionary and other types of subsidies and privately-owned, is often full of bad conditions, health and safety code violations. How would you ensure that all renters are warranted safe and dignified housing in our city?
Thank you, Magda. And uh, the first candidate for this question will be Charlotte.
Thanks for this question. Yeah, um, in the recent past, I've worked as a public housing tenant and resident trainer. And so I've heard horrifying stories from residents who live in public housing across the greater Boston region about the conditions they live in, about the failure of work orders to be completed and about utterly being shut out from democratically controlling the places where they live and call home. So we have to make sure that we are auditing all of the services that should be providing high-quality care and homes for folks who live here in Somerville. That includes the Somerville Housing Authority, Inspection Service Division, and the Office of Housing Stability. We have to make sure that each one of those departments has the adequate resources and capacity to deliver the kind of services that our residents and our tenants deserve. So whether that means moving the appropriate resources to staff up ISD or staff up OHS or staff up SHA, all those acronyms deserve the staff and the support to actually go out and deliver the services that residents deserve. In terms of folks who live in private housing, we have to be pushing forward and expediting that landlord registry ordinance that is currently being discussed in the council, right? That is something where the councilor's hands are not tied. We can move forward on that and make sure we are keeping very clear, open, and transparent track of who owns property here and what residents and tenants are forced to do and live under um, as non-owner occupied renters. From there, we have to make sure that renters understand how to navigate the complicated bureaucratic system that often is required in order to report if there is an issue going on in your facility. Um, while also recognizing that real fear and that real trauma that comes out of trying to report an issue that you're dealing with. Um, and for many poor and working-class people, we are already policed and surveilled more than our middle-class and upper-class neighbors. And so recognizing those struggles and those pain, those pains, and eliminating the barriers by making sure that we have staff that understand those experiences, that speak the languages of folks, and they're gonna provide compassionate care um, and services for, for our neighbors who deserve it the most.
Next, we have Justin.
Thank you for the question. So in addition, in addition to the Office of Housing Stability, we also have a Somerville Fair Housing Commission that is responsible and charged with investigating complaints of discrimination and unfair treatment or unsafe conditions in housing. So if you're experiencing housing discrimination right now or unsafe conditions, please reach out to the Somerville Fair Housing Com- uh, Commission. And it's important that our role as city councilors isn't just to fund these commissions that are charged with this kind of activity, but it's also to make sure we raise awareness of them in our communication with residents. I think it's tempting for candidates to talk in very general, abstract terms about these problems, but it's also our responsibility to be aware of the programs that already exist. And we make sure that we connect our, our residents in Somerville to those programs that can help them now. So in addition to the Somerville Fair Housing Commission that handles discrimination complaints, there's also a housing rehabilitation program here in Somerville. So homeowners uh, can actually apply for a zero-interest loan that they can use to rehabilitate their properties. And this also applies to landlords who own rental property. So this, this uh, zero-interest loan can allow them to do necessary maintenance to their properties so they are safe uh, for renters and well-maintained. And everyone deserves uh, to live in a safe, well-maintained, uh, living environment. So I think it's really critical that we use our role as candidates, not just as potential city councilors to raise awareness about these critical programs that exist that can help ensure that all, everyone who lives in Somerville lives in safe, uh, dignified housing environment. Thank you.
And next, we have Eve.
Yeah, so let me be really clear. I, the current situation for tenants is not acceptable. We have in uh, a, we have a Inspection Services Division, ISD, that does not fight for tenants. That needs to be comprehensively overhauled. And the, uh, whoever the next mayor is, as a city councilor, I will uh, hold them accountable to an effective Inspection Services Division that uh, enforces the law about uh, accessibility and conditions for renters. I mean, I know in my work doing housing organizing with the democratic socialists that we see things like retaliatory evictions for complaining about mold. We see people being uh, evicted for trying to organize in tenants' unions to change the conditions that they have. Right? So at the end of the day, uh, I agree that we should make people more aware of the recourse that they have uh, and the programs that are available to them today. But unless we make fundamental change to those programs and make them so they actually work for tenants and that they fight for tenants and they fight for dignified humane conditions, nothing will fundamentally change. And as for the uh, housing that the city would either directly builds or has influence over or can help fund, we should uh, have a Green New Deal for housing where we prioritize retrofits and upgrades. We can use the city's bond capacity uh, to issue green bonds to fund these kinds of things. People uh, deserve to live in dignified humane conditions. And a lot of it, uh, it comes down to the fact that um, for-profit, private landlords don't feel that um, they have any need to invest in their properties and that they don't feel any pressure from the city to maintain conditions to the standards that the law requires them to. And uh, we need to, and that's been enabled frankly uh, by the city and by inspectional services. So that will have to change and uh, that will be a priority for me as a city councilor. Thank you.
Next up, we have Kristen.
Okay, uh, hello. I think that, yes, as uh, as the city councilor, I've been working with communication between inspectional services, uh, the Communication Department and Office of Housing Stability directly to make sure that tenants are getting the information that's out there. I want this to be quarterly. Mailings are expensive, but it needs to stay in the budget. We need to support that. We also have to make sure that tenants are, are empowered with advocacy groups. And that counselors are aware of the situations that are happening because sometimes um, it it's, it's a lot of work and, and I want our tenants and our residents of our community to feel empowered. And I also want to mention that And I also want to mention that I've put forward a program and have worked with the Ward Four Councillor to make sure that our residents feel safe. So for instance, putting forward, making sure that the locks in some of the SHA housing buildings actually lock and that the buzzers work. Because in some of the buildings, they don't. And I've heard directly from tenants that they don't feel safe. Our residents don't feel safe, that the doors are locking. Being responsive is vitally important. And also, I've put forward work, say for instance, with the Hundred Homes Program, which is now in its first couple of years. And we've been, as a councillor, we've been working on, in the committees, in the Housing Committee, and also in the Port of a Housing Trust Fund, of how we can best support the Hundred Homes Program, which has scatter sites, units. So maintenance is really difficult. What I have proposed to SEC and some of our other partners is the idea of apprenticeship program with maintenance. And I've put forward the idea, part also, which can be used in the Women's Resolution proclamation I put forward, but it's creating jobs as well. And there's a lot of good that we can really do with this. And we're currently exploring it and researching it and working with it. And I'm looking forward to it happening. This is exciting.
Jake, you're up next.
Magdalena, thanks for your question. Your description of that one-sided power imbalance exists way too often here in Somerville, where landlords just, you know, enjoy such an advantage over tenants. The landlord registry system that Charlotte mentioned is a great start, and I support that and hope that gets the funding and becomes reality here in Somerville. I also want to see commissions like the Fair Housing Commission given actual teeth to do their jobs and address the problems and problem landlords in our city. You know, what is the point of a commission if ultimately they don't have any real power beyond embarrassing somebody? You know, we need to look into giving them powers to do things. In addition to making sure tenants know their full rights and know what they're entitled to, that they're entitled to a housing unit that is safe that they're renting. We need a system for tenants who find themselves in units that are unsafe to be able to report those unsafe conditions. And that report should trigger a quick and thorough inspection of the property by ISD or by another body, if someone else is responsible for that. You know, these reports can't just disappear into the ether. They need to be looked into. And then we need to ensure that no person blowing the whistle like that faces retaliation for reporting unsafe conditions or for organizing tenants or joining an existing tenants' association. There's simply no room in Somerville for unsafe housing and predatory landlord practices. And we need to be working to make sure that that's the reality. Thank you.
And we have Willie.
Thank you again for this question. There is a lot that we need to be doing in this space. I agree with Eve when we talk about reforming ISD and more fully funding it, so that the existing structure, which is wholly inadequate, can actually be dealt with appropriately, then given more inspectors, so that we can actually deal with the amount of code violations that are actually in our city. We need to be tracking these code violations. We should be publicizing them and saying which landlords are doing what, quite frankly. Then, insofar as we can, we need to have a system that actually punishes landlords that are routinely providing unsafe housing for their tenants. I believe in carrot and stick method. And if you just keep doing the bad thing, sometimes you get the stick. That's how the system is supposed to work, right? And we should be checking in on that. That means annual inspections that both tenants and landlords know about ahead of time and that when reports are created, they are public and that both tenant and landlords need to be able to sign off that this is what actually happened, so that there is no corruption or lack of transparency there. And quite frankly, we also just need to rebuild our crumbling infrastructure as a city. Somerville is a very historic city. We have whole houses here that are well over 100 years old. And luckily, we're in a time where we're, as a country, talking about infrastructure. Next week, in Congress, they are gonna be voting on both a $1.2 trillion and a $3.5 trillion infrastructure bills. That is $4.7 trillion that is gonna be dispersed. And some of that is gonna be coming to Massachusetts and some to Somerville. We should be putting that money into reforming these bodies and also rebuilding our crumbling infrastructure, putting in retrofitting, making it climate resilient, and also building social housing, so that we can actually have housing for those folks who need it the most. That is 30% AMI. Thank you.
And last candidate for this question is Virginia.
Yes, how you doing? So I wanted to just start by telling you a little bit what I actually went through while I was on housing. So I lived in a low-income development here in Somerville. And in my apartment, my water tank had actually exploded, and the water went everywhere. So, you know, they came in, it was a couple of days later. Didn't have hot water for about two to three days. And they did like a little cleanup, got a new water heater, no problem. But what ended up happening was is there was black mold under the rugs. There was black mold and grew into the bathroom. And it was all up, you know, my shower. And I would call the developer, again, I would call housing. I called everybody to try to get inspections. So I finally get an inspection, and it took about three, four months for somebody to actually come to the apartment and do the inspection. All while, my son, at that point, was about three years old. And in the process, I was taking him to the doctors. I couldn't figure out what was wrong with him. He got put on a breathing machine. I was calling everybody and anybody I knew, and nobody helped me. Well, finally, when housing did come, they did, you know, say, it got a field inspection. Well, they kept coming and coming, and they kept saying that they fixed the problem, and they wouldn't fix the problem. And in the meantime, I still had to live there. It took about six months, and they still hadn't fixed it. They failed three times. Thank God, I ended up finding a new place, but it had to be relocated. My son was put on a breathing machine. There was nobody there to help. I had nobody to call. And I think that's just very unacceptable. Again, you know, the developers took advantage of me. And I don't think anybody should have to go through an ounce of what not only just me, but a lot of people here in Somerville have gone through. Again, my fellow candidates have said everything. And there's a lot that needs to be fixed and done. And I want to be that voice, because as somebody who's gone through it, I understand it. This is my city, and I want to be the voice from our people. So thank you.
All right. Thanks so much, candidates. So for this next question, number three, it will be asked by our committee member, Jolanda, who speaks Spanish. And so Mario, our interpreter, will be interpreting her words for the non-Spanish speakers in the event. So, Jolanda.
Okay. Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Jolanda. Soy residente del distrito uno y miembro del comité de inquilinos de Somerville. He vivido casi catorce años en Somerville. He tenido que mudarme tres veces en el mismo lugar en Somerville. La mudanza ha sido casi por lo mismo. Tenemos que vender. Este, vamos a arreglar el apartamento. Pero a inicio de la pandemia, tuve la mala experiencia de que el dueño del apartamento pidiera que desalojar el apartamento con la razón de que iba a vender el apartamento. Fue una situación muy difícil. Una experiencia en la cual estaba pasando, pues digamos, muchas cosas por la cabeza, pérdida de trabajo. Y cuando, a veces uno no sabe de las reglas de la ciudad. Y como dijo una persona que, a veces los arrendadores son los que están más apegados a las leyes. Este, cuando yo le dije a él, tú tienes que darme una carta de desalojo, él decide decir, no, no te la voy a dar. También se rehusó a recibir asistencia por la renta. Entonces, ya el lugar se volvió un poco incómodo para mí y tuve que, en realidad, tener que salir de ese lugar. Y mi pregunta de esta noche es, los residentes de bajo ingreso a menudo se enfrentan a propietarios y administradores que pueden ser agresivos. Algunos inquilinos que son personas de color y migrantes han experimentado racismo y otras formas de discriminación. Esto significa que incluso si los residentes pueden permitirse vivir en Somerville, no se sientan bienvenidos ni acogidos aquí. ¿Qué haría para asegurarse que todos los residentes que permanecen en nuestra ciudad, que estén autorizados a defender sus derechos como inquilinos y estén protegidos contra represalias? Si se postula para la reelección, comparta lo que ya ha hecho sobre este tema y lo que pretende priorizar a continuación. Gracias.
Thank you so much, Jolanda and Mario. For candidates, the question is repeated in the chat box, if you need to see it. And first for this question will be Justin.
So, thank you for the question. I'm really sorry to hear about your experiences. And so I just want to reiterate that there are programs, you know, that exist, for example, through the Somerville Fair Housing Commission, that is funded and does have a mandate to investigate complaints of unlawful discrimination as it pertains to housing. And they also have the ability to provide legal references. And there are programs that also provide legal assistance to people who are lower income. So again, I want to underscore that part of our job in the city council is to use our role, not just as councillors, but as candidates, to raise awareness that these programs exist. Now, in addition, we also need to make sure these programs are fully funded as city councillors, so that way they can do active outreach to constituents. Let them know that these city services do exist, they do have rights to prevent housing discrimination. And in addition, as I noted earlier, you know, I do support complete neutrality as it pertains to immigration status in our community. Anyone who is either a citizen that lives here or meets our definition of residency, regardless of their immigration status, should be treated as equal in our community, with the one exception of voting, which is regulated by the federal government. And so they should fully participate in all of our city services, have the same access to housing that all of us do, and have the same support system that we put in place. For example, provide benefits in the event of housing instability. And I certainly feel that we should have policies that landlords should give their renters many months' notice if there's going to be a pending eviction, for whatever reason. So it's actually good business practice for people to do this, because if you give people a courteous advance notice, they also take better care of your property. So it's a shame that we have to create laws for things that are really just being a good landlord or being a good businessperson. But I think we do need to have rules about evicting people on short notice. But they need to be given plenty of advance notice. And that's just how any good business owner would operate. And so I just want to be clear that everyone in our community is welcome here in Somerville. And I think it's imperative that the city council put those well wishes into law, that we remove any distinction in our city ordinances or policy between citizens who are residents and people who are residents by virtue of the tenure in the city. We should not discriminate on the basis of immigration status if people are here as residents in the city, are following the laws, and are contributing members of our community. Everyone here is welcome. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, we have Eve.
Yeah, thank you so much for this question. That's a really moving story and I think a common one that many people have faced. I just want to say, you know, we have rights, right? Like, as a trans person, I think about this all the time. We have rights not to be discriminated against, right? We have rights under fair housing. But if we don't have anyone who will fight for those rights, and if the people in power are an obstacle to us exercising those rights, then they're just words on paper, right? And I think a lot of people have often found that that's the reality for them, including in Somerville. And so I think the key thing here, to make people feel that they are included, is to show them with actions, not just words, that the city is there to fight for them and to fight for those rights to be real in substance. So that when you are discriminated against or you feel the city is there for you, is a fighter on your side, that your elected officials, like your city councillors, whether it's their exact job on city council or not, will be an advocate for you. And that they're doing everything they can do with legislation and policy to advocate for you and people like you, for immigrants, for people of color, for low-income people, for public housing residents, for people who are experiencing displacement, bad conditions, and illegal discrimination from their landlords. And I believe that we can build a city that inspires confidence in all residents, not just the wealthy and well-connected. And that sends the most powerful message possible that you do belong. When you're part of an open, democratic movement that's fighting for you and that has taken power at the highest levels altogether to make sure we're a city that works for regular people. And that's what I think being a community organizer is all about. And I think that's a vision that CAS is fighting for, and that's a vision I'll fight for too.
Okay. Our next candidate is Kristin.
This is a really important question, and this is work that's been really important to me as a city councillor and as an activist. I want to first start by saying, I want to get rid of the "they's", or "they's" residents. These are our residents. It's us. It's our community. And I have heard, and coming forward, and of our residents, some of our residents afraid of retaliation from landlords is real. And I am currently working with residents, some that are afraid of retaliation, everything from their cars being towed in parking lots. And making, and are working side by side with our racial social justice director, who is incredible. And we have been working in relationships, working towards this. And this is a very long process that we have been building. It is ongoing. And the most difficult part is empowering us, our residents, to come forward. Because taking that first step to talk about it and explain what's going on is really difficult. I was part of a community meeting. There was supposed to be one in St. Polycop last week. It was canceled. And we'll be holding the organizers of SEC to reschedule it as soon as possible, a community meeting. And an additional one that happened a few months previous to encourage our residents to talk and connect. And also, I'm there. I have been working side by side. This has been happening. We have to mobilize. We have to meet our residents, our community, where they are. It's ongoing, and it's again about us.
Okay. Thank you. Jake, you're up next.
Gracias por tu pregunta, Yolanda, y lo siento que te haya pasado esto. It's dehumanizing, and I'd like to think it's un-American for anyone to be displaced just because of who they are. Sadly, this does happen. As others have mentioned, we have a fair housing commission here in Somerville. It's crucial that their work be funded properly, that the commission be filled, and that they're allowed to carry out these duties that they're entrusted with. We need to make sure that landlords are fully aware of fair housing laws and, more importantly, that they genuinely believe that if they do discriminate... And more importantly, that they genuinely believe that if they do discriminate against a tenant or a potential tenant, that they're going to be held accountable. You know, it's one thing to know the laws, it's another to know that you're going to be, you're going to be expected to follow those laws. And the reality is, you know, it doesn't always happen. I mentioned this earlier, but we should have publicly funded legal counsel available to tenants or potential tenants. And I would extend that to those who feel that they're facing discrimination, not just, not just eviction. You know, I think this is something that the public should support, because the reality is most of these tenants are likely facing an uphill battle in court against a landlord with better resources and, and legal representation. Unless, unless the city is putting where, putting its money where its mouth is and, and providing legal counsel for them. Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Willie.
Thank you again for this question. I think it really gets to the heart of how our current laws are very inaccurate for the current situation. As other, as the only candidate of color here, I have to say that we know that there are fair housing violations that are going on throughout our city in a variety of ways. Whether it's around section eight discrimination, as we've heard a little bit before, or as it pertains to immigration status or persons, ethnicity, color, or background, or national origin. I was once an intern at the Equal Rights Center, which is a civil rights nonprofit that works on accommodation and fair housing issues. And I, during that work, I had to hear calls from around the country from people who had their rights violated for for, for protected classes because of who they are. And it was heartbreaking and I know that's happening in this city and we need to do as much as we possibly can to combat it. Under our current laws, when you get a notice to quit, you are legally obligated to get all your rights. You know, landlord has to say, hey, I'm evicting you, also here are your rights and here's how you can try to fight it. We should flip that on its head. There's no reasonable reason. We should only tell people the rights as they're in the worst position to fight back. We should, anyone who signs a lease in Somerville should get documents pertaining to all of their rights, including how to document and report fair housing violations and code violations. Right now, our fair housing committee gets very few reports yearly. And that's because people don't know actually how to report the fair housing violations that are going on in this city. We should be making that more clear. We should be putting money into fair housing checks like I was trained to do to say if a landlord is actually discriminating based on race, class, or any other reason. And we should make sure that we have organizers on the ground in CAS, in the community land trust, other and elsewhere, we're going to be pushing to make sure we have strong power in the community. Because the community will lead us to justice and equity. Thank you.
Okay, and next we have Virginia.
Yes, so I agree with a lot of what my other candidate said. I think that we need to work with the fair housing commission and educate the landlords ahead of time. Not when there's a problem already. They need to know ahead of time what, what the rules are, what the laws are. And you know, work with them and the low-income people, again, to take that stigma away. That's the big thing is that there, there's, you know, stigma within everything, you know. And being a single mom, I myself obviously went through that. I know people on a day-to-day basis that are going through that. So I think that we need to, again, you know, go around, be on the ground, have resources. We need to make sure that we're enforcing the laws. Stand up. I want to be the voice for the people. Again, it's just about educating and, and getting out there and maybe having a program that you can, you know, call and talk. Let's, let's speak to these homeowners and developers and bring our community together to help everybody. It's our community and we should be a community. We should be working together. So nobody has to deal with what I went through, with, with other people are going through. You know, funds, obviously, again, my fellow colleagues and candidates have, have said, you know, we'll find it, there's a way. You know, for all of us to be able to live here, not be scared to speak up if there's an issue. Have the resources when they do want to stand up and speak for themselves and what they're going through. Not be scared, know their rights. And, you know, just come together and let everybody be aware of what's going on. And like Willie said, you know, it shouldn't be when it's happening. Everybody should know, well, you know, we should be on the ground, let everyone know ahead of time. So that if something does happen, they know who to call. They don't feel helpless. I felt helpless and I promise you, I wouldn't want anybody else to feel the way that I did. And I know, Yolanda, you went through the same thing and I'm sorry you had to go through that as well. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And the last candidate for this question will be Charlotte.
Again, thank you, Yolanda, for sharing your story tonight. I know how, how painful and terrifying it can be to speak these truths. And to more importantly, speak truth to power, right? When we go to our landlords to say these conditions aren't right or fair or just, we are speaking truth to power because our landlords unfortunately have power over us. So we have to start by making sure that we're creating spaces where tenants and residents can come forward and disclose if they've experienced discrimination. Or if they've experienced unfair, unjust housing conditions. Obviously, as we've all acknowledged on this call tonight, we do not have those complaints like coming forward and in the rate of which they are happening. And so we have to adjust and address why that is. How do we actually make sure that the fair, fair housing commission is going out, making itself known and making sure that residents can turn to them and disclose when these things are happening while also recognizing that real fear, that real retaliation, that real risk that people have if and when they come forward. And acknowledge that we have to build better systems and structures to actually address that. Addressing these individual instances and individual stories is one thing, but we're living under a system of exploitation, structures that inherently exploit us. And until we're actually building the kind of public and social housing where residents and tenants have deep and real control over the places where they live, we are going to be trapped under these systems of exploitation that allow landlords to get away with what they did to Yolanda. So we have to make it as difficult as possible for landlords to exploit our residents here in the city. Whether that is building this landlord registry so that we can keep very public track of what happens to our tenants and our residents when they're discriminated against, when they're living under unfair and unjust housing conditions. Exploring what we do in terms of fines and fees to make sure that we're making it again as difficult as possible for our residents and our tenants to be exploited against. And more importantly, I look to our neighbors in Boston, like Mildred Haley, who fought for public housing conditions and public housing tenants and residents have real control and power over their buildings and their developments. So we have to be moving hell or high water to build more public and social housing where residents and tenants have real control over the places where they live. So they get to make the decisions and they get to feel safe in their homes.
All right. Thank you to all candidates for answering question number three. I'm going to ask the fourth question of this evening. Again, my name is Denise. And, but before I ask the question, I would like to share a little bit more about myself and my experience were how I was going through the system to get financial assistance. So last year with the pandemic, I lost my job, I lost pretty much all my income. And before I owe any rent to my landlord, I started to go online and see how could I get help, because I knew already I was going to get behind. It was, it was wonderful to go to mass.gov and see all the information, however, there are a lot of gray areas. I also went to the city of Somerville, contact city of Somerville. Because I didn't owe anything yet, they couldn't help me. They gave me information to contact CAS, which I did and was great. But in the meantime, I, we were under, we're still under the estate moratorium. I've received a notice to quit or to become a tenant at will by my landlord. And that's when I, I went in panic. Just to remind, we were in the state moratorium. I didn't owe any rent. And he did that because he was already thinking the moratorium, in my, in my mind, I think that he was already thinking the moratorium is going to end. And let me pull my tenants as tenant at will, because if they get behind the rent, I can kick them out. It was horrible. And that's when Nicole got in touch with me. And the process that starts, like my communication with Nicole, it started in September. And she put me through other departments with CAS and connects with other departments at CAS. But took five months for me to get anything. Like I applied for RAFT, took five months for me to hear back from them. It's not easy. I speak the language, I'm a resourceful person, and it was a struggle. I cannot imagine how it is for people that are not resourceful as me and don't speak the language and don't know where to go. Moving forward, asking question number four. As a city counselor, how would you collaborate with your colleagues on council and the new mayoral administration to protect Somerville renters from displacement due to developments? And how would you ensure that new developments give the allocated number of units to low-income residents as the oversize seems to be currently lacking?
Thank you so much Denise. And I just put this into the chat. But I don't know if this is an anniversary you'll be marking, but I just want to thank you because we're almost reaching the one-year mark of you turning your crisis into courage. And really grateful for you being here tonight on behalf of renters across our city. So yeah, our first candidate to answer this question will be Eve. And it looks like our blue sky, our blue sky timer has left the room. So Sam will be holding up her phone. Thank you, Sam.
Thank you for that.
He's giving just one minute. Sorry.
No worries. Let me know when you're ready.
Two minutes and fifteen seconds. Okay, I'll start it when you start.
Thank you so much for sharing your story Denise. It really does take a lot of courage and it's very moving. And honestly, it just makes me so angry to hear about landlords treating tenants this way because we know that this happens all around the city. And I've seen these stories firsthand from my neighbors and it has to stop. And I think it really highlights another kind of anger I feel when I hear Charlie Baker and politicians like that talk about how, you know, RAFT is and programs like that are just going to solve the problem and it's all going to be fine and we can, and we don't even need the eviction moratorium, like the assistance is out there, like, which is this very right-wing mentality that's very inhuman and doesn't address the challenges that people face in, in our communities, in our real world. So for me, the ultimate answer here has to be just building community power to say enough is enough. And I think in terms of mitigating displacement, the community benefit agreement process that we saw in Union Square, I think is a really powerful tool to make sure that new development that's happening, like on this huge scale along the green line, is actually benefiting the community and that we can organize and fight and use our leverage to say, you know, if you're going to build this big thing here and try to make tens of millions of dollars, so you, the Chicago billionaire, can have a bigger yacht, that's not going to go, it's not going to fly, right? We're going to, we're going to have development that really benefits the people who live here that has many more affordable units than you were imagining, that makes direct payments into the community land trust to build permanently affordable housing and that frontloads affordable units so that people aren't pushed from their homes while fighting at the state level for tenant protections like just cause eviction and rent control to make sure that people can stay in their homes long-term and aren't unjustly evicted. Thank you.
Okay, the next candidate we have is Kristen.
Right on, because I, all the, I, all the words are bubbling in my head and I have to get them out of my mouth. Okay, first off, absolutely, CBA, public has to be brought in, the community organizations have to be involved in the CBA agreement. Second, we have to expand our housing.
Counselor, sorry to cut you off. Just slowed down a little bit for the interpreter.
We have to expand our housing stock for three and four bedrooms suitable for suitable for the needs out there. And I want to talk about, I saw this firsthand in my first weeks as a city counselor, including CAS. I remember the first month, David Gibbs reporting that, that in the first month, it had, CAS had exhausted its whole budget for the year forward, for the FY22 budget in about a year because of the need. And what Denise is explaining is real, it was happening. And I was screaming as loud as I could to make sure funds were getting out there. I was also working hard to make sure that the Office of Housing Stability was, was getting the support because I was very afraid, because they were a lot of, they were getting a lot of the incoming needs first and then it got bundled to CAS and, and Somerville Homeless Coalition. So it started, a lot of the incoming calls were coming to OHS first. I was worried that we were going to absolutely exhaust the Office of Housing Stability employees, which there were only a few, and I pushed to expand funding and employees. They were able to get some contractors. Interpretations, interpreters took a lot of work to find a constant stream of volunteers and eventually contractors. You are absolutely right Denise, it took months. And might I add that sixty-seven percent of the households expecting or needing, needing and calling for housing, RAFT funds and rental assistance, sixty-seven percent of those homes had, had children in them. We did, it was, it was one of the worst experiences. I bet I cannot imagine what you went through. I am at your side and I am fighting hard and I will continue. I'm sorry.
Thanks so much. And next we have Jake. What's the timer's ready?
Thanks Denise. I know from our previous conversations just how crucial CAS was for you in your battle. And you're not kidding when you say that you're resourceful. For those who might not be as resourceful as Denise or as fluent in English as Denise, it's great to have programs and resources and these, you know, we all admit are out there. But we know that more important is making sure that these programs and resources are actually accessible. And this means good websites translated into multiple languages. Having people on hand to answer questions, having people to, to guide people through the process and navigate that. Because otherwise, it's asking the impossible of people. And as far as, as far as affordable units, it's simple. Building permits shouldn't be signed off on if the project doesn't meet the clear affordable unit obligations. These are the rules and developers need to follow the rules. I follow the rules, I expect the same of other people. I don't think that's asking anything unreasonable. I'm a supporter of community benefits agreements. I think the city should encourage these by working with residents to show them the way with these, show them what others have done. Put them in touch with, with people who worked on these in other areas of the city. And, and by supporting the work of these community benefits agreements. Ultimately, we need to be building the kind of housing stock that our city really needs. We've got enough luxury units in this city. You know, what we need to be building are, are the kinds of things that people actually need. You know, people talk about affordable housing, you know, that, that's, that's one thing, you know, we, we need, you know, I can't, one of my, one of my fellow candidates mentioned three and four bedroom, yes, I think it was Kristen mentioned. We have such a, such a low inventory of those. So, and I'd say if developers aren't going to build this, I think that we should be getting into this business publicly with public land trusts. Thank you.
Okay, and next we have Willie.
Thank you for this question. And I, I just have to start.
Thank you for this question. And I, I just have to start by giving a shout out to Union United, which is a community organization that's done so much work around this. Through pushing for organizing and negotiating um community benefits agreements alongside Union Square Neighborhood Council. Um I really do believe we need to be passing a community benefits agreement ordinance that incentivizes these. It makes it easier for other neighborhoods uh to create neighborhood councils. I live near Ragoon Square and I can only imagine what the Green Line is going to bring to our community in terms of development. Um and I know that right now we need to get organized before there are encroachments that make it harder for the small business owners. Um to stay um in their locations. In addition to community benefits agreements, we, I want to address the other part of the question as well. That talks about how we're going to hold the council and the mayor accountable. I'm running this campaign because I know that we can do more around affordable housing and putting power in the hands of the people. That's why I support community benefit agreements. And I've had conversations with um all but, I've had extensive conversations with all but one uh mayor candidate. And I, if I'm so lucky to be elected, I will be very vocal um with um the new administration. I'm willing to have that conversation publicly um in terms of the priorities that the council, the new council is going to be elected on. Because I believe the new council is going to be transformative for the next ten years of our community. It needs to be one that is premised on creating permanently affordable housing in this community. Um and making that housing green and sustainable. That's why I've been organizing with the Somerville Community Land Trust. Um and I, I know that I, together as a community, we can hold both the council and the mayor accountable to these demands. Thank you.
And our next candidate is Virginia.
So again, um I think that educating and assisting the landlords who rent unit and new developers to provide more units. Units um and for financial assistance. Um we need to help renters and protect them um all priorities. I also need to, we need to explore streamlining our application process. Now, as somebody who has gone through multiple application processes for this housing, it is, it, it was a process. Um you know, you have to fill out a new application every time. You have to go there and, and you know, you're in a room with fifty other people trying to fight for, you know, four. Um units and again, most of them are one or two bedroom. And you know, as a single mom with, with a, a child and a disabled retired veteran that has lived in some of them my whole life. I never received one phone call and I would go from place to place as they were opening up most of these new buildings. Um and, and again, you know, this was about eight or eight, about eight, seven years ago. Um but I know the process hasn't changed because I just did one a couple of years ago. Um just, you know, in the trauma that goes with it, you know, you, you're looking for a new house. And if you don't get it, you don't have a new place, are you gonna be homeless? Um so the mental, you know, state that you go through to even look for the housing, we need programs. We need people there to maybe help us, help those that are going through these application processes. Make them not, you know, they, they wanted bank records, they want years of um, you know, checks. And, and if you don't fit their criteria, then you don't get a place. Um I didn't get a phone call until four years, four years from the first application that I put in. And that is unacceptable for any resident, for anyone. Um you know, so the, these, the, the process itself to get an affordable unit needs to be changed completely. Um and again, I went through it by myself. There were no programs or anything there for me to call. Um and it takes step by step and, and um help me through that process. So like my other colleague said, I think that's also something that is the process is what we need to, you know, look at as well. Thank you.
Okay, uh next we have Charlotte.
Um before I talk about collaborating with colleagues on the council or in the mayor's office, I think for me as an organizer, collaborating with the folks on the front lines. Our movement organizations who have been leading the struggle for housing justice have to come first. Um so making sure that we are building strong and deep relationships with folks at CAS who helped put on tonight. But also folks in the Greater Boston Tenant Union, mamas who have been giving direct financial aid to folks to help them stay in their homes. Um as well as uh the Somerville Homeless Coalition and other groups who are really doing this work on the ground. And understand the issues better than I ever will as a councillor. Um and ensuring that folks have a seat at the table and real decision-making power when it comes to the housing policies that we are crafting together and setting into action. Um I think from there, I really appreciate what Willie had to say in terms of making sure that whatever mayoral candidate gets elected. The council is an equal partner to the mayor and that we make sure that if the mayor is, you know, not signing project labor agreements for big developments. If the mayor is considering any sort of um affordable housing waiver, that we are stepping in and preventing that from happening. Because folks' lives and livelihood and survival is on the line. And so again, fighting tooth and nail to make sure that we are building as many affordable units as possible. Um in terms of some of the more direct uh policy issues that we could be considering. A lot of folks have talked about a citywide community benefits agreement ordinance. I think that's fantastic. I think we also need to provide support to neighborhood councils and neighborhood associations that they actually understand um how to negotiate with developers. So we're not just throwing them in the deep end and forcing them to negotiate on their own, but providing them real training and real support so that they can have power in those conversations. Um considering how we can use the Green Line Extension refund that we're gonna be getting back, right? The GLX was supposed to address environmental racism and inequitable access to public transit. But if folks get displaced, those things are not gonna be addressed. So how can we use the GLX fund to make sure that we are keeping folks in their homes? That there's enough uh support staff at the Office of Housing Stability to fight for people to stay in their homes? And that we can put dollars in people's hands so they can pay their rent and pay their bills. Um and then most importantly, making sure that we're increasing density across the city in an equitable way. So we're not just forcing our most working class, low income neighbors to shoulder the burden of high density, high-rise buildings. But that there's real parity across the cities, that we're building more housing in a fair and just way.
Okay, the last candidate we have for this question is Justin.
Thank you. So I think it's imperative that the city council use its legal authority to support a creation of community benefits agreements. So that way we have additional investments, not just in infrastructure, but also uh funds to help workers who are displaced as well as residents who are displaced by new development. Uh we need a city council that is prepared to use its legal power and ability to organize our community to get the most out of every development. That's just good business practice and it's in the best interest of our community. And I actually participated in a rally in Union Square organized by Union United. And you know, it's important for us to remember to thank activists who have actually been very effective on this issue. Union United actually was able to acquire additional funds to support workers who are displaced by the ongoing development in Union Square. And I really think they are a fantastic model for us to use citywide going forward for all developments. To make sure that we're getting the most from developers to support people who are the most impacted by their development decisions, uh including workers as well as residents. And um you know, in addition to supporting people who are displaced, we need to make sure what we build in Somerville is consistent with our values. We have a law that says we should build twenty percent affordable units and we need to enforce it. So we're negotiating with developers for new housing, we need to make sure that they actually build the twenty percent of affordable housing units that our law requires. And not to simply pay into a trust fund that never actually gets uh spent on actual housing. So let's follow the law on city council. And, and I think we've actually seen enormous improvement in terms of affordable housing construction. And we also need to take an expansive definition of affordability that also includes middle-class families. So I don't think our twenty percent affordability is enough in itself. We need to have another bracket to cover middle-class housing as well. Because the middle-class families are finding Somerville less affordable. And then, you know, I just want to point out that in order to actually afford the new housing construction, we need new streams of revenue to support the underlying schools, the services and infrastructure that is necessary to build it. So we need to couple our new housing construction with uh commercial lab space that can actually generate the business tax revenue we need to afford our schools, city services. And that housing infrastructure that's affordable to all. This is the only way to make housing happen. You're not serious about housing if you do not have a serious way to fund it. And we need to couple housing and business revenue development to make that happen. Thank you.
No worries. Thanks Mario. And that's just another reminder to candidates to try to speak slowly so Mario could follow along. Uh might mean, might mean to condense your remarks just a bit, but in the best interest of Mario and Jolanda. So Mario, once you're all set. Okay, wonderful. Akita, over to you.
Hi again, my name is Akita and I'll tell a brief story how I got involved with CAS. I live in Assembly Row neighborhood in affordable unit. And um last year, uh the start of COVID nineteen, I had no choice but to leave my job because my two-year-old at the time daycare had closed. So we all knew, I never been through a pandemic before like most of you. And I was worried about losing my job and I didn't know what was happening with COVID nineteen. And um I got a cease and desist letter um one morning from a, I'll um, I'll, um, from my landlord. Saying that if I, my kids don't stop making noise, that I'll be evicted. I didn't owe any rent. I paid all my rent on time. And because the tenant downstairs was complaining, they believed everything that she said. And they even went as far as asking her to record us and giving us dates of the noise. And some of the dates, we weren't even in the unit. That's when I decided to reach out to CAS, which advocated for me. And that problem was a thing of the past, but also there's more. But that's one of my issue where, where I'm living right now. And I'll ask the final question. And affordable housing funding is critical but limited. Subsidies often bill homes that are still too expensive for the people struggling the most. With one-bedroom rents over fifteen hundred per month. If elected to office, what policies would you focus on to ensure safe and affordable housing for all? But especially the lowest income residents of Somerville. Those who are living at or below thirty percent of the area median income.
Thank you so much Akita for sharing uh that part of your story. Um and I know your journey's been much longer than that. Um so for this question, our first candidate will be Kristen.
Thank you. And I know, Akita, I know, I know. And um making sure that the information is getting out there and what you experienced. Uh is important and you speaking your truth and what you experienced needs to be said. And it inspires me quite frankly. And also, we need to, we need to um that this is why I, I was um talking with landlords to ensure that of, of some of the largest during the, the crux of, the center of the pandemic that. And continuing on that landlords are top, landlords are not top uh largest landlords are not a victim because it's unacceptable. Continuing on, we need to stigmatize uh the, the whole concept. First off, as I mentioned before, we have to have more realistic, affordable and accessible housing stock. The three and four bedroom units are essential. They have been needed for decades, but they have not, the housing stock has not responded. Second, we need to talk more about the summer VIP program, which kicked off a month, actually a couple of weeks before the pandemic got into full swing. The summer VIP program, which is a Somerville program, incentivizes landlords and renters and realtors to um, to, to um keep, to accept. Uh section eight housing, uh to expand the section eight housing stock. But to incentivize to, to rent, to, to keep Somerville renters here with uh section eight vouchers. It's not happening and it's unacceptable. The housing stock in Somerville, I think that only uh what? There were ten in two, in the last year of vouchers, some real rent residents who wanted to stay in the community, ten with vouchers were actually able to. It's unacceptable. We need to expand the summer VIP program. And, and just getting the awareness out is important, but also expanding it, funding it better and continuing it on along other steps that we've, that I've been taking and I'm encouraging.
Okay, our next candidate is Jake.
Akita, thanks for the question and for sharing your story as a parent of, well, still semi-small children. Uh that's infuriating to hear. Look, affordable housing makes a huge difference for those who are fortunate enough to win the literal lotteries uh to get to live there. But the reality is that this entire city used to be affordable housing. What we're doing there can often feel like, you know, a drop in the ocean. It's not to say we shouldn't, we shouldn't do, it, it, these are, these are noble things worth doing and we should definitely keep doing that. But this is where things like building an entire development of truly affordable housing. And by that I mean low income and middle-class housing um like we discussed earlier. That's where that comes into play. Uh that's, that's where you really start to move the needle um in this city in terms of, of uh making a difference with the affordability crisis here. I said it before, but if developers aren't going to uh to come in and want to build that kind of housing stock, then I think it's incumbent upon us as as a community to, to do that, you know, through things like community land trusts. And then section eight vouchers were just mentioned. Uh those are an important tools as well that don't involve necessarily building new housing stock. That can be done with the housing stock that we currently have. Incentives for landlords to, to participate uh in those programs are, are great. We should be, we should be doing everything we can to incentivize landlords to do that. And, and then making sure that the, the agencies that are issuing these vouchers, you know, are actually recognizing the, the true cost of, of living in Somerville. And that uh people receiving section eight vouchers aren't priced out of, you know, non-luxury units here in Somerville. Finally, uh I just want to say, I know from friends who've worked with CAS just how vital your work is now more than ever. Uh and I'd love the opportunity to sit down and talk to CAS members and listen to you. Uh thank you.
Thank you Jake. I'm sure the staff and our renters committee would be thrilled to sit down with you and any of the candidates. Um so the next candidate we have is Willie.
Thank you again for the question. Um and I have to say just first off, Akita, that your experience sounds horrific. And I'm so sorry that you went through it. As a firm, as a former journalist, I also know that it is illegal to record someone without um asking their permission in the state of Massachusetts. So just even hearing that just kind of sent me uh over the moon in a rage. But this is a very important question. Um it gets at the uncomfortable truth that in our housing market in Somerville, even the affordable housing often is too unaffordable for the people who need it the most. We need to be doing everything we can to take this transformational um period that we're in, it may be once in a century chance, um to use the funding that we're getting back from the Green Line, that's up to thirty million dollars. With some of the funding that we're getting from these infrastructure bills that are um poised to be passed. I hope they pass and I hope we can actually pressure the administration as both a grassroots community and from the council perspective. To actually use those funds to invest in socialized housing, to put more uh money into um units that are actually affordable to people who are making thirty percent of the area median income. Because the folks and for the missing middle folks as uh people have alluded to before. Through my organizing with the Somerville Community Land Trust, I know that there are patches all across the city of vacant um land and also underutilized land. I mean, some of that underutilized space is actually along where the Green Line extension will be. So we need to be as a city investing into uh socialized housing, increasing our density along the Green Line. Putting in community benefits agreements so that we know that the spaces that are being developed are done so in a way that does not increase. putting in community benefits agreements so that we know that the spaces that are being developed are done so in a way that does not increase pushing people out of our city displacement. And I know that we can do it if we have a community that is in action, organized and speaking truth to power. And that's why I'm trying to run. Thank you.
Okay, next candidate we have is Virginia.
Yes, hello. And I want to say, Akita, I know firsthand as I'm dealing with the kids right now, running around, making noise and, you know, asking them to be quiet so that I can, you know, do this Zoom meeting with you guys, you know, ordering pizza and trying to do it all as I sit here. So I am so sorry that you even had to deal with something like that. But that's a big reason why we need to use the tools the best that we can and have these developers, you know, have incentives so that they build bigger buildings that have more units in it. So we have families in them with kids and, you know, build that community together. Instead of it just being a few units of, you know, a couple people that are, you know, 30% in low income. And then the rest are all people that can afford to pay $3,000, $4,000, $5,000 for, you know, one and two bedroom. We need three and four with the children and bring our community back and bring the kids and have, you know, more of that. So again, I am so sorry that you had to go through that. I never went through anything like that. I did have a couple complaints, but nothing, you know, that serious. So I truly, my heart truly feels for you. But we need to work with these developers, you know, there's other cities that have done it and give them incentives so that they will build bigger, again, for the bigger units. I also think that we need to be less afraid of buildings if we do want more units. I'm not saying, you know, let's become, you know, a Boston. However, I think that we could go a little bit bigger to get more units for the people of Somerville so that we have the housing that we deserve here. Somerville is a sought-after city, you know, everybody wants to move here. We're close to Boston. We have the new train coming. So, you know, let's make it so that we can actually stay and live here. So I want to say thank you.
Okay, and next we have Charlotte.
Yeah, I just want to start by saying solidarity with you, Akita. That fear and that retaliation that so many tenants and residents have experienced when you know that you're in your right to have your children in your home or have your friends in your apartment or to just live your humanity in the place that you call home and have landlords come in and violate that is such a dehumanizing experience. So, you know, I feel you. I've been there and solidarity with that. And we need to make sure that folks feel like they can come forward and say that and that landlords, sorry, that landlords are unable to violate our rights. In terms of actually addressing the affordable housing crisis that we're experiencing here in the city, I want to name that Massachusetts was the first place to have any public housing built in the entire United States. We were one of only four states to have state-funded public housing. So when we're talking about folks living 30% below the average median income, we have to be exploring expanding public housing and expanding social housing using city dollars and fighting for more state dollars that we can build that kind of housing. And then expanding the financial capacity that we have, whether that's through the municipal lending facilities or addressing our bond rating or fighting tooth and nail at the legislature to pass the transfer fee. We have to be expanding the types of revenue that's possible so that we can be building the kind of public and social housing that we can keep folks in their homes and build more homes for people. Similarly, I think we need to find ways to incentivize the universally designed homes near the Green Line extension, family-sized units and affordable units. And then making sure that we're never, ever, ever giving a waiver to a big development that's going up and that we can even find ways to incentivize those types of units, whether they're ADA, accessible or universally designed or family-sized units. At the end of the day, developers want to build in our city. We have a vibrant community that is full of working-class people, of artists, of people who bring so much joy and creativity to our community. Developers want to build here. There's a question of whether we have the political courage to stand up to them and make sure they're building the kind of homes that keep our community vibrant, not buildings that keep Somerville vibrant and creative, it's the people that live in them.
Okay, and our next candidate will be Justin. Sam's ready with the timer.
Thank you. And I just want to reiterate, what happened to Akita should happen to no one here in Somerville. We need landlords that respect the rights and privacy of all of our residents. And so we need to make sure they are normally protected by the law, but we make sure we resource the city commissions so that people actually know that these services exist. And as we all know, housing is not, affordable housing actually is not all that affordable to many people. So we need to also build a low-income subsidized housing as well. But this, to actually accomplish this, this requires construction of higher-density housing as well as housing subsidies. We need both density and subsidy. Density alone is not enough. So people need, people should realize that there are two components to making housing accessible to the lower-income residents. And that includes subsidies as well as construction. And not only should we build the 20% affordable units as well as low-income subsidized housing, we need to expand our definition of affordability to cover middle-class families as well and create a second tier for middle-class affordability in our housing construction. You know, honestly, I've been active in democratic politics for decades, as many of you know. And I've been hearing 20 years of promises about affordable housing, but Somerville hasn't become more affordable over these 20 years. It's become less affordable. And so what's been really missing is a way to fund our affordable housing priorities. And I think it's important, as Kennedy said, we stop making promises we cannot deliver because of lack of funding. And you can tell how serious the candidate is about their proposals when they actually provide a way to fund them or not. And so we need to couple our new housing construction, including affordable units and low-income subsidized housing to the construction of commercial lab spaces citywide, so they can generate the business tax revenue we need to fund the schools, the city services and the housing infrastructure to support them. Without that new revenue stream, we cannot build any more affordable housing. And so the only way to make our dream of a more affordable housing, more affordable Somerville possible is to actually have that separate stream of revenue. And so I am committed as a city councillor to ensure that we not only make promises about affordable housing, that we fund them as well. And I ask for your vote November 2nd. Thank you.
Okay, and our last candidate for this final open-ended housing question is Eve.
Yeah, thank you so much. Yeah, I mean, conceded this question, right, that there isn't enough housing at the 30% kind of AMI level just goes to show even the affordable housing, quote unquote, that we're getting out of some of these inclusionary zoning projects, big developers, isn't even really affordable. I think it just goes to show that the housing market and big-money developers have failed us in our community and failed to provide the kind of housing that we need. And time again, time and time again, we hear from our political leaders that we need to make big business rich in order to build more housing. And I just don't think that's true. We live in the richest country in the history of the world. And every time we try to get just a little bit more for regular people, we hear that the developers are going to go away. Well, that's what they said when we increased the affordable housing percentage to 20%, but the developers kept pulling the permits. That's what they said when we banned child labor or invented weekends in the early 20th century. They said businesses couldn't function if we had these basic rights. And we need to throw that mentality out the window. We need to recognize our own power as the community. And the revenue streams are there. They're called the developers' profits. They get away with murder in our community and they're enabled by our political leaders. We need to tax the big developers to build affordable housing while using also like our excellent bond rating and capacity to directly build housing that meets people's needs. I am fed up frankly with this austerity mindset that we just don't have the resources that we need to meet people's basic human needs when we do. And I want to live in a Somerville that's excited and thrilled to have a budget, our $200 million budget, deployed to meet the needs of the ordinary people who make this community an excellent place to live, to us, to our neighbors. And we can absolutely do that. And we don't have to make nearly as many concessions to the big-business billionaires from out of town as some folks might think in order to get there. We just need the political will.
Thank you, candidates. We will now take the last several minutes of the forum to do the lightning round questions. I'm now passing it to Denise.
Thanks again, Akita. Hello again, candidates. Now comes the fun part, the lightning round. For this final section, we'll ask candidates a new question every 20 seconds. After I say the question for the first time, the timer will begin. Candidates will need to respond at the same time with a yes or no answer using the signs provided. Yes signs are green and no signs are red. You have 10 questions for this round. The questions will also be posted in the Zoom chat. Sam, is the timer ready?
Yes.
All right, let's party. Question number one. The Massachusetts State of Emergency ended on June 15 and the Somerville Board of Health decided to extend our local eviction moratorium for 90 days, so until September 15. Do you support a 12-month extension of the moratorium from the end of the State of Emergency would be until June 2022? Willie, I need to see you and your sign. Thank you. All right. Question number two. Do you support making Somerville Fair Housing Law stronger by removing barriers to housing, specifically both cores, criminal records and bad credit? Question number three. Do you support eviction record stealing protections for tenants so that evictions from the past do not become a barrier to housing in the present? All right. Question number four. Do you support a stronger oversight of the Inspection Service Department, IST, to improve the enforcement of the Housing Health and Safety Code? Okay. Question number five. Do you support municipal tools for rent control? Okay. Question number six. Do you support a stronger oversight of inclusionary housing program to make the application process and communication for residents in this unit more accessible? Okay. Question number seven. Do you support requiring all developers to enter into community benefits agreements so that the community's needs are central to the development process? Okay. Question number eight. Do you support municipal ownership of affordable housing? Not necessarily all such housing, but some portion of the city's housing stock. Okay. Question number nine. Do you support guaranteeing the right to counsel so that all tenants have legal representation court eviction proceedings? Okay. Last question. Do you support allocating of federal COVID relief funds to cancel all the following types of debit in Somerville? Rent, mortgage and utility? All right. All right, folks. That concludes our I'm sorry. Okay, that concludes our lightning round. Thank you to all candidates for your responses tonight. I'm passing to Fabiano to close our forum.
Thank you, Denise. Thank you so much. Hello, everyone. My name is Fabiano. I'm a community organizer at CAS. On behalf of Somerville Renters Committee and CAS, we are sincerely grateful for everyone's time and attention tonight. Thank you to the seven candidates running for Somerville City Council at large for participating in our forum to share your vision and policy proposals for housing in our city. Thank you to the public who joined us remotely to watch these forums, whether for one night or all three nights. Most of all, we thank the Somerville Renters Community, Akita, Denise, Marla, Jolanda, Matt and Andrew, who are volunteer leaders from our community. We are grateful for your monks of hard work to organize this series of candidates forum on housing. This was our third and final forum for the 2021 election. If any Somerville resident, especially renters, would you like to learn more about the CAS Community Organizing Program, enjoying our movement of families and neighbors to create a better Somerville for everyone? Please reach out to us. We can also connect you to our older anti-poverty program at CAS for Housing Stability and Early Childhood Education. Our website is CASSomerville, C-A-A-Somerville.org and our phone number is 617-623-7370. Finally, as with the older forums we hosted, this event was recorded. It will be posted online soon and shared through email. We will also share the candidates' housing questionnaires once they are ready on the CAS website. Thank you, everyone, for, thank you, everyone who joined us over the last week. Good night and stay safe. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. I'm going to conclude our Facebook Live.